Let's do this.
Let's do it, do it.
Six fifteen, the meeting is now called to order. Mr. Medina, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting goes to the closing conference that we give. Gentlemen, if you remove your hats and everyone else outside, all that are understood, or disrupting behavior or office will be tolerated. How about this, like if we get shit, I'll probably prosecute you.
The majority of the citizens of Socorro is not for the caballeros, favoring tazza la cachusa or the churro, or favor of the men and the senes, or the tipo que es único. No se va a poder dar ningún tipo de... ...un poramiento de la ciudad con...
I think we need to work catch you. It's just so bad, so bad in general. Catch you chance to be more fair.
Yeah, but I don't understand it.
Rene Rodriguez is absent. Cesar Nevada.
Here.
Ralph Duran.
Here.
Mayor Elia Garcia.
Here.
Victor Perez.
Here.
Ivan Colombi and Lobo is absent. Mayor, we have a call.
At this time, would somebody entertain the motion to move items number thirteen, fourteen, and twenty up?
Mayor, do you want to be public comment?
Can we move it right after public comment then?
Thirteen.
Fourteen and twenty.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to move up items thirteen, fourteen, and twenty in that order, following public comment.
Second.
Rene Rodriguez is absent, Cesar Nevada.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Ivan Colombi and Lobo is absent. Yesenia Cadenas. Ms. Cadenas, you have three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Yesenia Cadenas, and I'm the manager of Roger Alba Towing in El Paso, Texas. The reason why I'm here is because I want to see if we can revisit the ordinance three thirty-four, amendment number one, and that will be for the, to get the permit for the rotation, to be able to serve the city of Socorro. My application has not been denied, but it's being held on hold because the P, uh, the police department, they do want our services, but we are just not in the miles of the ETJ, which is, um, like your area that you have. But we've already tested some of the areas here in Socorro and how long it takes us to respond, and we haven't, we haven't responded in less than twenty-nine minutes in any part of Socorro. And so I would like to know if you would be interested in revisiting this permit. And we've already had two incidents that we've been there, and we wait for your records that are being called out to show up, and forty-five minutes pass, and then I'm allowed to come in and turn it into a private, because the tow trucks are not showing up on time. And so with that, um, the two times the traffic was stopped, and this was close to the freeway, one of them, right there by the, the truck stop, and the traffic was building up, and they were having to pass them through the desert side to, um, get them through the traffic. And the other one, um, the gateway was blocked off, the whole thing, for forty-five minutes, because we had to wait for the, the time to be out, and then we recovered it and the, and, and we left, and the, still the tow truck hadn't showed up. That was called out on your rotation. So with that, uh, citizens of Socorro, I don't know if, whose permission I need to be able to, to get this done, or at least get, get a chance, even like a six-month, uh, um...
Permission.
Like period, like a trial period? I don't know.
Could you just repeat the name of the tow truck company, please?
Roger Alba Towing.
Ms. Cadenas, your time is up.
I have the applica, I have a copy of the application. If you would like it, would like to have it, because I know that the lieutenant still has the application. I s, I have a copy for you.
Ms. Cadenas, your time is up. We'll go ahead and look into the issue, and we'll keep you posted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, and those were all our speakers.
Item number thirteen, public hearing on ordinance one eighty-six, amendment six, an ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas, changing section two, civil service commission functions, duties, procedures, and rules, and section three, division of the civil service. Six twenty-one, public hearing is now open.
Good evening, my name is Miriam Cruz. I am on the civil service commission. I just wanted to, in case counsel didn't know, um, one of the commissioners in our commission brought up something that he noticed that was a little weird, uh, in our ordinances. And so we decided to make a meeting to look through everything that falls under civil service commission, and throughout the whole meeting, um, we decided to go line through line. We made suggestions, we discussed them, and Ms. Marine and counsel worked really hard to put together our, what we suggested in our amendments. And so that's why this is in front of you today, and I hope that you consider adopting them, because we did take the time to discuss them, uh, link, lengthy time that we took. But it was good discussion, and ultimately, we all agreed in, in all the amendments that we are proposing. So I just thought I'd stand up and let y'all know that. Thank you.
Six twenty-three, public hearing is now closed. Item number fourteen.
On important lawyer, the parents of civil service issues is coming as other ways that I told.
Okay. For...
For fourteen.
Mr. Perez, very quickly, has counsel reviewed the proposed changes?
Has been involved in some. His first favor, he's the board certified, he's...
Should we go on to twenty and then come back? Okay. Item number twenty, discussion and action to approve options made available to city employees and exercise cities' option to renew health coverage with Blue Cross, Blue Shield of Texas, MM zero-two, MM forty-three, and MM H-one with HSA banking for a twelve month period pursuant to existing contract in connection with the approval of bid proposals for voluntary dental, vision, life, and voluntary accident, critical illness, hospital indemnity, group disability insurance, employee assistance program, section one twenty-five, pre-tax services for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, for employees of the city of Socorro, and to allow USI insurance services to negotiate additional rate reduction for the aforementioned insurance benefits.
Motion to approve for discussion.
Second.
Is your question?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Art Lopez. Thank you for allowing me to explain this to you. What we did is we did a recap of what your employees committee reviewed. They reviewed all the spreadsheets and all of the pamphlets and presentations and binders and contracts that were submitted for consideration for your benefits. And what we did is we were presenting the top two programs that are the most competitive. So when you look at this first, and you have this as well, you have the PowerPoint in front of you, but when you look at this, let me just fucking use this mouse. Does that show up in there? Yeah. So this is your current annual budget for your Blue Cross, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, and I will say that that's based on your current census. If your census increases, that budget will increase. If your census decreases, that budget will decrease. So we do everything based on your current census. So your current budget is eight hundred and thirty-two, and initially, Blue Cross submitted a quote to you or renewal of six percent. On the RFP, however, they submitted a zero increase, so there was no increase to the, to the Socorro for the renewal on the Blue Cross, and all the benefits stayed the same. On the submissions that were received, EDNA was the most competitive. They actually came in at six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, considerably less than your current budget, about a hundred and sixty-six thousand. But what we do is we looked at the benefits in consideration that you, as a board, need to consider, and the board, um, the employee benefits committee were in, would like to stay with Blue Cross since we did get a zero rate increase, but we'll go over to see if it's a choice that you'd want to do as well. The difference on the hundred and sixty-six thousand with EDNA, your out-of-pocket costs right now, so if somebody goes into the hospital, their worst-case scenario in-network is two thousand five hundred with Blue Cross. EDNA actually came in with a little better program. Your maximum out-of-pocket would be fifteen hundred. The prescriptions are a little lower, and that's the second line here, so it's not a huge difference, but it is considerable difference for the employees. What's not as positive is the office visits. So on a daily usage or the areas that are used the most, the Blue Cross co-pays are lower. In blue are the Blue Cross co-pays. For example, for a primary care physician, Blue Cross, your employees and their family members would pay fifteen dollars. With EDNA, they'd pay twenty-five. On your specialist, it's the same fifteen dollars at Blue Cross, but with EDNA, it'd be fifty dollars. And the urgent care goes from forty dollars to seventy-five, and this is a big emergency care, co-pays would go from one hundred to five hundred. So one of the areas that we would like to do, and it's going back to the first slide, is to, so you don't have to switch, even though we got a zero rate increase, we'd like permission to go back to Blue Cross and negotiate to have them lower their cost, and you pay us a fee and have them include our fee in there so you don't have to pay that. I think that we can, we can, I don't believe they'll go one sixty-six. We'll negotiate, but I need your permission, because I'm not familiar with your procedures, if we can do that or not. But if we can, I feel confident that we can lower your cost even below the zero rate increase, keep Blue Cross and not have to switch to EDNA. Or we can consider switching to EDNA, ex, uh, take the hundred and sixty-six thousand, but our employees are gonna have to switch care, or they might switch doctors, their co-pays are higher. So that's what we need your guidance on, is your permission, if you would, to allow us to go back to Blue Cross and negotiate a lower cost. That's item number one. I don't know if you do that item by item or we finish, because there's a couple more things that I want permission on. So that's your, that's your medical, okay? We feel a rate increase of zero is fine, but we actually think you can do better. We think we can get Blue Cross to go lower. Okay, we're pretty confident of that. The next benefit that you had was your basic life, medlife, the benefits stayed the same. They actually came in with not a huge increase, thirteen percent, which is a little over, about seventy-two hundred dollars a year. A company principal came in, matching your current benefits, and giving us a two-year rate guarantee. Again, I'd like permission to go back to medlife and see if they can eliminate the increase and possibly give us a two-year rate increase, or we can switch to principal and not take the increase and get a two-year rate guarantee. So, and I'll finish. The voluntary life, there was no increase, but if we have to switch to the principal, they will match your current voluntary lifestyle, your employees, costs don't go up, your payroll deductions don't have to increase, they all stay exactly the same. The next area is your dental. On your dental, it's with medlife as well. Your current budget's forty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. They had a seven percent increase, up to forty-five thousand. The principal, again, was very aggressive. They actually would match your benefits, and, uh, and it's a reduction of eleven thousand dollars. But we would like permission to do one of two things. Uh, if, if, if medlife won't agree to it, we'd like to go back to medlife and ask them to eliminate the increase, so that we can, uh, get rid of the increase, the seven percent increase, which is eleven thousand dollars, and ask them, we know that we can get principal to give us a two thousand lifetime benefit. We'd like to ask medlife to do the same thing, which would increase the benefits to your employees and keep the costs the same. So we're asking for permission on that as well. The vision, uh, there was no rate increase, everyone's happy with that benefit. Uh, nobody came in that was more competitive. The voluntary short-term currently is with Aflac. There was no rate increase, and all the competitors were close. It's a matter of do you want to switch all your Aflac information over to, and the, uh, the actual spreadsheets and competitive, uh, costs are, for anybody that wants to review them, um, in their office, but it's considerable. There's not a huge difference, if any, on the benefits for the short-term disability and the voluntary accident. There may be a drop and increase, but you have to consider that your employees have been with Aflac forever, and they would have to switch to Colonial, the one which is the most competitive on these benefits. There was a company, there was two bids from Colonial that were, the only two that were considered even close to what Aflac was doing, but you would have to have all your employees re-enroll. And then you have an EAP program, which everyone's happy with. Uh, they gave us a slight increase. We had one competitor come in with a, really offered exactly the same benefits, considerably less. You're paying forty-eight hundred dollars, they are offering around two thousand dollars, but we don't know what their service is like as far as, we know that your current, uh, management is happy with, uh, the EAP they have, they're completely responsive to your needs. They're immediate, they come down when it's needed. So even though it's, it's, uh, more expensive, it's a program that pays for itself if any one person uses it. It's a very, very receptive program, very rich, they're happy with it. We just want to go back and say, you know, we don't want the increase, and I believe that's it. So really, we're asking for permission to go back and negotiate the carrier, your existing carriers, to match the most competitive rates, and I'm not familiar with the procedure to do that. I don't know if I can or can't do that, or we have to accept what was on the RFP. I don't think you've done it historically. This year, you got a lot of responses to your RFP, which last year, I think you only got one, if I'm not mistaken, one or two, this one you got considerable. Are there questions?
Mr. Perez?
Is there a timeline that you need to adhere to, uh, so that we can get the approval of, with this, uh, I guess, be, before the city council to, for final approval?
So what we were considering is if, if you're, if I'm not mistaken, your question is, do you want to address that?
Yes, because we need to make, we may, need to make a decision today, because we need, we need to move forward with open enrollment. Then we'd like to do that next week, so that we can have any change, any changes processed before the, before the beginning of September. Since we, um, insurance is paid in advance, we need to have everything set up in September for the next, uh, benefit year.
So two more things, two more questions. So then, the potential, uh, motion would be to allow for the, our, the agency to go back and negotiate with Blue Cross Blue Shield? And, uh, what would be the timeline there? Because if, if you're under a crunch, would, would you all come back to, for a final proposal?
I think, um, we can do it in September, as long as we do open enrollment before October first, because that's when our new fiscal year starts, both with benefits, and so it, it would be putting us in a crunch. However, we can come back on September the sixth, our next council meeting, with actual numbers of the final numbers, and then we can schedule our open enrollment right after that.
I'd like to, well, actually, there's a motion, I'll go ahead and amend my motion to allow, uh, and I apologize, sorry, I didn't remember the... USI. A USI to go back and negotiate with, uh, with Blue Cross Blue Shield on the proposal and, uh, and see if we can get it a rate before the city.
Second.
So it's not just Blue Cross. So let me understand, so we're okay with Blue Cross at zero, and I'm very confident we can reduce the cost. And then how about our recommendation on the dental would be to go ahead and switch to the principal, because that's a seamless situation. We can do a computer enrollment. I know we can get a two thousand dollar lifetime benefit, so like double your benefits and keep the costs the same. Actually, we'll keep it at the reduced price, and just go to the principal and negotiate with them. And if, what we would do is use, negotiate, let me just get back to this, the life insurance? Use the principals to nego, to actually switch to, to the life insurance. Again, that's seamless, the employees don't have to enroll. We can do a computer rollover, it's done in automatically with your staff, and we just get an Excel spreadsheet. So that way, we'll have the basic life, all switch to the principal, realize the savings, get a two-year rate guarantee, um, the voluntary, it would, they would match, your employees are not a stress level at all, and Socorro would realize the savings and have a two-year rate guarantee. So those are the two areas that we would like to negotiate. The Blue Cross, accept that it's zero, and we'll do better. I'm almost certain we can get it below fifty thousand savings. I mean, I feel confident with the knowledge that we have, that we can save an additional fifty thousand to the Socorro, and then we'll save the, uh, the savings, not on the basic life, it'll, it'll be no increase, but we'll certainly realize another eleven thousand dollar savings on the dental, double the benefits, keep the, the rates the same for the employees. Those are the two things I'm asking. We're okay?
So then I'll go ahead and re-amend my motion, please. Uh, I'd like to amend my motion to allow USI to pursue the negotiation and changes as, as presented.
Okay. And what we're going to do is we're gonna negotiate to, you guys are paying us a fee, and we're actually gonna ask Blue Cross to pay that fee, so that eliminates your fifteen thousand dollar fee as well.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Rene Rodriguez is absent, Cesar Nevada.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Ivan Colombi and Lobo.
Yes.
Mayor, for the record, Mrs. Villalobos arrived to the meeting at six twenty-six.
Moving back to item number fourteen, second reading, an adoption on ordinance one eighty-six, amendment six, an ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas, changing sections two, civil service commission functions, duties, procedures, and rules, and section three, divisions of the civil service.
I'm gonna make the motion to approve for discussion.
Second. Mr. Kayler?
Mayor and counsel, I wanted to address the ordinance changes that, uh, have been proposed by the civil service commission. There are some significant changes, and so wanted to go through the, what they are, and if you have any questions as far as legal advice, we can do that in, in closed session. With regard to changes to the former statute, first of all, if you look at, um, page three of the changes, the revised ordinance, under section G, the... Well, I'm just going through the significant ones. And there's some minor housekeeping ones, I'm just focusing on the major issues, and, and if you have any questions on the, the other minor changes, we can go through those, but as, to maximize time, I'm just going through the major ones. Item G deals with removal of civil service commission members. Under the prior ordinance, um, because each of you would be responsible for the appointment of a commission member, you would have the ability to remove that commission member. However, the change that is suggested by the civil service commission in G states that, that the commission member may be removed for cause by the city council on a written charge after a public hearing. And so that's a fairly significant change to the, the prior wording. So previously, you would have the discretion as a city council representative to remove the individual you had appointed. Here, you would not have that discretion, it would, uh, there could only be a removal after public hearing and a vote by the city council. Moving on, there was, um, the, the, on item I, the conflict policy has, there's no significant change to that. If you turn to the next page on Q, on those areas dealing with nondiscrimination, the prior wording limited to specifically to those that are recognized under existing state and federal law, with a few exceptions, and the new language is somewhat broader and deals with, um, certain topics, parental status, pregnancy, gender identification, and others that were not specifically included in the, uh, prior ordinance. And so there is an, an expansion with regard to what would be considered discrimination there. And then if you would turn to the next page, and this would be one of the more significant changes, is that under the prior ordinance, those that would be unclassified, and the significance of classified versus unclassified employees, classified employees would go through the civil service, uh, commission process, and I know that several of you are former members of the civil service commission, so that the right to have a hearing before the civil service commission, uh, would be afforded to all classified employees. Under the prior ordinance, there were a variety of individuals who were employed by the city of Socorro who were not entitled to civil service protections, and those included, um, the city manager, the human resources director, planning director, public works director, city clerk, city engineer, um, the fire chief, if, if there was one, uh, the municipal court clerk, director of parks and recreation, director of sanitation, director of community service, and any new department heads. And so what has changed here, you'll note that essentially, there are not going to be any more unclassified positions. So everyone from the city manager on down would be classified and entitled to civil service protections, and would go through the process before, um, the, the civil service commission. So, you know, you may recall, there's been removal in the past of the department heads by, you know, and the city manager would have that authority, that would typically not go through the civil service commission. As changed, that would be a, a significant change on that, a, as well as the city manager would also go through the civil service commission. And so there are, yes...
I, I do have a question, and, and I, I agree with, with what you're saying in, in having those protections for those individuals under civil service, but, and please, I, I'm just going off memory. In the city charter, isn't the, the city manager a Natwill employee of the city council? So don't...
That is correct.
So don't we have a conflict there with the...
That, that is exactly correct, and so there is, by my reading of the, the existing ordinance and the new ordinance, I do have a concern with regard to how that would impact the authority.
For this to be, I mean, that probably involves legal advice, I mean, should, should I probably... Okay. All right.
And so, and then if you look at E, and that gets to the, the issue that we were just talking about, it really, all regular full-time employees will be now classified, and so that, that would be an expansion of the civil service protections for quite a few... a few, uh, formerly unclassified employees, and I, I can address your concern in closed session, if you'd like.
Mayor, do you want to move to the-
Yeah. Do we have a motion to move into executive?
Make a motion to move into executive session, to consult with our lawyers.
Second.
Rene Rodriguez is absent. Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Yeah.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Ivan Colombia and Lobo.
Yes.
Six forty-five. We're now in executive session.